Attention, boys. I'd like to call in the board members. We just started here. We're going further. I'd like to give some introductions. And then we have to definitely turn over to what it is that we're doing. But I'd like to go through the background of all the classes we've been with. That's where we're all kind of handling things along. But I'd like to introduce our board members. This is Eric Chen, who's one of our board members. Now, Mr. Baker, Dr. Baker is in the business of receiving and giving to the here. His girl plays the same kind of high school soccer, being there in the section. So it's his priority to get you to see. To my right is the superintendent, Jeff Beattie. Next is my president of the organization, is Frank Curry. And at the end, I hope you may look when we do all that. In addition, the board members and the superintendent. Over by the door there is Mr. Kirk King. He's a fellow parent and he's a director of the kind of school. And the lady that's kind of recently given to her, is Rhythm House. She's the executive secretary of the board. Kirk is superintendent, often times a member of the dogs. Doing that dog charity, not as much as we get. But we're all glad to be here tonight. We look forward to the event we're going to have. My name is Steve Priestley, and I forgot to introduce myself. I'm a fellow somebody here earlier. I started the school a bit before I went here for five years. Some other change, but a lot of that, it's been a long time ago. But we are glad to be here tonight. So at this point, I'd like to confirm another question. It's Mr. Davidson, who is the director of the superintendent.
Parents, before we get started, and once the kids finish singing, Mr. Peters is going to dismiss them by row. And then if you're not going to stay for the board meeting, you may go out to the hallway with your child before we actually start the board meeting. Okay? At this time, I'd like to have Ms. Heather Wacy come forward, our student house president.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Wacy. And I am a fifth grade student. And I'm a senior candidate as a candidate at the university. I would like to welcome everyone who has served school for the board education. And I ask you to clap each of these hands for the best.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am proud to be an American, American, American. I am proud to be an American, American, that's me. I'm proud of this country, I'm proud of this land, I'm proud of the things that make it fair. I am proud to be an American, American, American. I am proud to be an American, American, that's me. I'm proud of this country, I'm proud of this land, I'm proud of the things that make it fair. I am proud to be an American, American, American. I am proud to be an American, American, that's me.
While the storm clouds gather, or across the seas, let us swear allegiance to our land and tree. Let us all be grateful for the light of day. As we raise our voices in a solemn prayer. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her. Through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the braries, to the oceans, white and gold. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her. Through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the braries, to the oceans, white and gold. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
I was telling the parents, we were doing our study, the music, right? We should learn my students.
That's something.
Okay, we've got ready to begin today. I'm on my breath here. All right, I'm loaded. Best we can get is a big motion through the minutes. I'll hold the six feet up here. This is the second time, Mr. Kirk. Down on the yes, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'll put you on the side then, I'll go to the principal down with you. Thank you, sir. Okay. And we move on to the president, depending wherever he gets situated. Thank you. Here you're ready? Okay, I'm just going to pull this up here right here.
Okay, boys, warming up. Mr. McGee, President Priestley, and all the members. I want to welcome you to the midway entry this evening. It is an honor to have you in our presence and to be in our school. We had the honor earlier today that a special visitor, Mr. McGee. There's so many guys waiting for the name. Actually, Dr. Marlon also paid us a visit today. They had a really good visit with the state superintendent. This evening with me, I have Mr. Paulie. If anyone's fourth chair, bring it over.
I'll go to Mr. Keen.
Mr. Paulie is a fifth grade teacher here. He's also a member of our leadership team. We also have Mrs. Kestner, who's a first grade teacher and also on the leadership team. And we also have Mrs. Gilmar, who's a top one teacher. And she is also a member of our leadership team. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and walk away from the mic and go ahead and get started with our outside seat preparation. All right, I'll start by talking about the West Virginia General Summit Assessment. Now, you probably heard from the other meetings that there's not a lot of item analysis out there for the test. And you know, we can't break it down. The state hasn't broken it down for us as they did with the West test. So basically, what I'm going to talk to you about is our overall proficiency grades in math, English language arts, and science. This is a breakdown of our English language arts. And if you're holding your folder, there is a copy of the priority in your folder. It may have changed a little bit, but for the most part, it's the same. The first column gives the grade. Then you have the number of students tested and the percent proficient. As you can see, this is the English language arts. And in two of the grades, you can see we were above the 50th percentage on nearly 60%. Actually, I believe if you were to take out the students that were at our school less than a grade period, we had, and actually, three through five, we had five students who were at our school less than a grade period. But they're still counted into our data. They're not supposed to count. And the state hasn't removed them yet. Our percentages will be a little bit higher because all of those new kids that we got, they were all not proficient. So we're probably a little above 60% if you were to do that. And certainly above 55% in the fifth grade if you were to do that as well. As you can see, we did have a problem in our fourth grade, 33% proficient in ELA. That is not good. And as you all know, we are a priority school. And we have, this is our third year as being listed as a priority school. We were notified by a member of the state department back in late September that we were the only priority school who made gains on the new test from the old test. As a matter of fact, the people that they had doing the presentation to the priority schools, they offered to the book that we were building on, which was turning high poverty schools into high poverty schools. They met with us at lunch and they asked to come to our school for a visit to see what we were doing to turn the school around. As you know, by the way, the benchmark is 75% by 2020 for all schools. That's what we're looking at. And this is math. Math schools, as you all again, probably heard, we're not good across the state. But again, we don't use that as an excuse. You can see we had some issues in math, particularly in fourth and fifth grade, where we had not going through our kids. It's more proficient, third grade, half our kids were proficient in math. And if we break it down for ELA, if we were to break it down midway, the county in West Virginia, you can see that in ELA, we are about a percent and a half above the state average. Again, this is three through five. Math, again, about a percent and a half above the state average in math as well. For grades three through five. We look at our science scores. Now, science was only given in the fourth grade. Take a look at our science scores. We were, again, it's locked in above the state average. State average, we had 36, we were at 40. So in all three areas, we were above the state average. But we still have a lot of improvement to do. And it just so happens that one of the pieces of the puzzle in improving that is having the county teacher of the year. And then is Mrs. Jessica Kestner. And she's going to talk to you a little bit about what we're going to do and what we have been doing to try to continue to improve our test scores.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk to you about what our plan is to improve achievement in reading and in math at our school. And we have several things up there. I found out that we're not way too yet on every single one. I'm going to touch on a few. I'd like to, very first one, letter A, which says, our holistic IR program. This is brand new to our school this year. This is a computer program that we purchased for grades K through two to help increase those early form skills. And we've been using it for eight weeks. We were trained on it as a staff. And so far, it is absolutely relevant. It also allows teachers to be able to track progress of students. And it has a lot of resources go with it. We're really excited this week, it's been here throughout the whole school year. So we're really excited about that. Letter D is our book and our book buddy program. We have Stowe Island, our corporate teacher. She's in charge of ordering our book, which partners with Pizza Hut. And so students are encouraged to read books throughout the month. And then at the end of the month, if they've achieved their goal, they receive a free personal hand pizza from Pizza Hut. So that's been really a dear deal in our school, we love that. Letter C is take a book, leave a book program. We implemented this a few years back. We noticed that a lot of our students just don't have books at home. We take them to a library every week, but they can't keep those books. And so we decided to do a program that allowed kids to donate books. Kids who have books, they donate them. And kids who maybe didn't come and get a book. And then it's called take a book, leave a book. They can take a pen, so they can come and drop a book off. They can grab a new one. And you should see how many kids drop in that hallway and go through this course. They absolutely love it. And allows them to have the true materials at home. They may not have the books yet.
There is a law more taken in relation to the case of law.
Well, we encourage that. That's what we do for a while. Letter D is our I cap group. That's our intensive learning awareness program. Our intermentress, Toni Vernon, has been working in the first grade now for the last eight weeks. That program really helps with those basic learning awareness skills that sometimes kids just don't quite get up in kindergarten. She does work in kindergarten, just not yet. The students that end up in that program were initially tested for their GIBS. And if they tested intensive, which was our lowest score, then they were able to work in that group with her. So she works with them for several weeks and then she'll switch them over to her. I'd also like to point out the letter I, which is our book buddy program. We started this this year. I know other classes have done it over the last few years. But this is something that I know my class and one of our fourth grade classes, Sarah, her class and my class, have decided to partner up with book buddies. So one of her students with one of mine, and they come together once a week and they read books to each other. And they absolutely love it. It's so exciting. They see each other in the hallway and, okay, oh, honey. You know, they just get so excited to read to each other. And they'll see a feature of that in our presentation as well. And then we have the letter K, our mystery readers. Every week, by once a week in a classroom, if anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, we bring in a mystery reader. They kind of build up this mystery reader by often clues to the students, about who this mystery reader could be. And then usually on Fridays, we have that mystery reader come in and read a book to the students. And they, all week long, they've been trying to guess different clues of who this person is. And then they find out on Fridays when they come to them. And so we try to get parents to be a cool convenient to read books to our students. You know, that's our endeavor. Last thing to talk about is letter L, which is here volunteers and our reading centers. I know in my classroom, our reading centers are a very great teaching structure for our students. They have different activities they do in our classroom. While he is a teacher, can focus on a small group of students and really get those skills that maybe they don't get in a normal classroom setting. Well, I've asked this year that some parent volunteers come in and help the students who are not working really. And they go over to some other centers. I have parent volunteers coming in and helping those students up to four days a week. So that has been absolutely wonderful help. And they can see, you know, their parents and their family, they really do appreciate that. This is a picture of our staff retreat that's been on our reserve this past summer. We talked a lot about project-based learning and how we really want to implement that in our school this year. And our goal is to try to incorporate at least one whole school project this year. And then one for a classroom teacher. And during our faculty senate, this is past week, we did vote on what we wanted to do as a whole school. So we're really excited to incorporate that. Here is an example of our book buddies. Again, about fourth grade and first grade. And as you can see, we partnered up our ways with a, you know, a book partner and our host with a book partner. And actually, I know we're being perfectly in our classes that every world would have a book buddy and we would have a book buddy. Because we know we do have a lot of struggling with book readers. And they need to see that it's important to keep reading even as you get older. And so those fourth grade students have a goal to work toward reading to the younger students while our young students are trying to show off and read to the older students. And they really do love that. These are some plans to help improve our student achievement in math. Again, I don't talk about all of them, just to leave them. The first one is we have Lynn Baker from Crete too. She's come to visit our school. And she's propped up our classrooms and given us a lot of constructive criticism with our teaching. And she's propped up our classrooms and given us a lot of constructive criticism with our teaching to help improve just our teaching strategy and what we're doing in our classroom. Letter C is our Title One teacher. We have Amber Gilmore, and she does phenomenal job working with our fourth and fifth grade students. Because as you can see from our test scores, which her data is recently talked about, we do have struggling learners in math in the fourth and fifth grade. And so she's there working with those students every single day. She's also going to come up and talk about Monday Math and Mystery, which happens every day in our school too. So I'm going to introduce Amber Gilmore.
Good evening. As you mentioned, I want to talk about Monday Math and Mystery. If you would want to look into what we're on the last page, I'll put up this stuff. To be an example of the Monday Math and Mystery. We saw that math was a need, a growth. And we saw that it was those foundational skills, these learning, basic math skills. Kids need, they needed that foundation of numbers sense. So this was just something that we started to help with that and to keep it fun for the kids. So what we do on Mondays, and I put this paper in teacher's office. And this is an example of a third through fifth grade. And the teachers see this paper, the students do not see this. The students see a hundred and hundreds chart, or a hundred and forty. And then the teacher can choose whether to ask clues, you know, ask the student. Students or the students can actually come up with questions and say, well, is the number even? Is the number odd? Is it a composite number? Does this num, is this number a factor of fifty? Or is this number divisible by thirty? They ask, I'll ask them math type questions, where the teacher gives them those clues to help them out. And then they eliminate on that hundreds chart until they find the mystery number. And then after that, they have a quiz there that they can walk out of right ways to make that number. You know, with base ten blocks, maybe use it as money. Just try to get those foundational skills in that number sense. And then usually at the bottom, we try to get that ten more than that mystery number. Ten less, a hundred more. Sometimes in the older grades, it's not like this particular paper, where we would do a hundred times mystery number to extend this back to something, and they love it. And that's what the trophy you see here behind Mr. Foley. What we do is every classroom that enters their paper goes into a drawing. And then on Tuesday morning, I put in a form which class won the drawing. So, you know, all five teachers participated, their class goes in the drawing and I draw it out. And they get so excited because then they get to peek this trophy in their room for that week. And they love it. They'll send you come down the hall and go, our trophy, our trophy. And then we started, because that was successful, we started a reading. And that's what's on the other side of the page, this is the reading example. And we also have a reading trophy. And so usually, one of us will do their fifth math and primary reading and then flip flop. You know, that way everybody's getting a reading one and a math one every week. So that's our Monday Math and Mystery. Okay, the next thing I want to talk to you about is our school climate. You've heard Ms. Kessler talk about ways to quickly improve your achievement. And if we need to improve our achievement, but in order to do that, we have to create a climate that welcomes the students and reads their needs. So some of the ways that we're doing that is through Project Wisdom. Project Wisdom is a character education program that we've adopted. And every morning, we have a student from our student council come down and read over the intercom a paper. And it tells about responsibility, or it'll tell about attitude, and it's something positive to build character. And they read it on the intercom every morning. And they totally enjoy listening to the different stories every morning. We also have our awesome hoppers board, which came down the hall. That's where every month, a teacher, each teacher will select a student whose piece of writing that they thought, you know, was very good, and they put another board for everyone to see, and that's our display. We have themes of the month, and that's another board you passed in the hallway, we'll have a picture here in a minute. Every month, we have a theme that helps build character. And each month, a grade level will focus on that theme and they will write about that theme. And that's what goes on our bulletin board. But while that grade level is doing the bulletin board, every other classroom is also doing the lesson. And they'll get their curriculum when we go here. So another good character education program. We also have our after-school program, which is up and running and working wonderfully. We have two hundred applicants, but we usually aggregate about seventy kids a day. The kids get a hot meal, they get food, they get enrichment activities. They have a focus like Monday, they have a focus for math, Tuesdays a focus for science. They have the math sign just for the kids who love that. I really think that comes to our science in schools this year in the fourth grade, which is all they do. They have other activities, you know, since in the past, and some this year they're going to have are archery. They have guitar lessons and things of that sort. So it's a really good program that the kids participate in and they get homework care and it helps our parents and people as well. Our real health counselor, we have her now on Mondays and Fridays, and she comes in to help students that use that extra social emotional counseling. She talks so many to me. And then our patchy hoppers board, you're also passing the hallway, that is to recognize our students that scored, loved threes and fours on the West Virginia internal assessment. And we get them home, our score, so we solve the little cookies with their age and, excuse me, and the areas that they explore and get for. There's some of our themes of the month that I was telling you about. So this month is making the world a better place. And then later on, we'll see, we'll do lots of places, make our area of life, building that font. There's a table that's on the back of the page. And then school improvement. And the way that we're making improvements around the school is we got a new hanging on the back of the building. It was very nice, it was done this summer. And then also the new story book, we would definitely like to thank you for the story, especially. Especially Mr. Curry, because you were very helpful.
I was afraid you were going to ask that.
Yeah, we do appreciate it. It has been very helpful for our needs. We have a lot of students out of spirit, we're focused on that, and we do appreciate it, thank you very much. We have student leadership. And actually, we received a combination from the OUPA audit last year for our student leadership. We have student council. As I mentioned, we have one of our three health members that brings that project with them every morning. They also help around the school. They've been with Mr. Davis and make decisions about some of our staying in upper boards that Mr. Foley is going to talk about some of it in this chapter. They help him make decisions, but they couldn't involve the students because we need to hear their voice. They have a problem with flag waving. They're just very helpful in our school and helping to grow. We also have safety control, they help keep kids safe. They monitor the hallways, the noise, they help make it as quiet as possible. We also have flag control, and they are responsible. Every morning, putting our flag up, hanging the veil, just our training, giving the veil, if it's tax stack. And we actually have a better color, a better training, how properly to fold it, how to properly take care of it, and talk to them about the responsibility. So we have a lot of students that are really responsible and showing we're good at their actions. We have a new greenhouse from one of our grants that we received. It was fine, we never got to use it, but it is up, it's up front, and we can't wait until time uses. Exit projectors, we have those in all the classrooms except for three, but we didn't buy for a new ones. That's already ready to be installed, so we'll start with that. New key floss, Mr. Foley will talk a little about that later. We see those areas being cleaned up, because we have people come in here and put graffiti on there, you know, outside school boughs. So we have had that cleaned up. And we have a new sign, thank you again for proving the purchase of our new sign. It's not up yet, but it'll be welcoming people to our school. We want them to see, you know, our sign, they get off the corner B, you can see that we're proud when they're going up there. And you'll see a picture of what that sign looks like. And we also have a daycare mall, you saw that, maybe it just came down. That lets our kids have pride in what they've done, but also lets them know we have some room for improvement. And they can see how they're willing to, the parents can see this is cool. This is an example of our sign, and it looks up to the wall. Again, thank you for proving the purchase.
Mine is under programs, practices, awards, grants, we have that. We, I believe, Mr. Davis, several others, helped write this community school program very strongly. And I think it's a twenty, it's a seventy-five thousand, twenty thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars. And we, we had this conjunction with the community charter. So these are some of the things that have helped this grant provide for our school. We have a community school coordinator, and that is Jason Thompson, probably ever, and she came with the building, but a wonderful job. She's a parent here, but she's also a regular there. She does training sessions, volunteers, she calls all these things, says, Penny, I can't even name all the kinds of things that she does. Every time I look around, it's Jason working, so she's not long since, she's a working constable. This also is grant provided, and tendance mentor, and that's one of our teachers, and she's a second grade teacher. And what she does is, when you see students who are having certain, certain days during the course of the year, she sits in the background, she calls the parents. Because in many cases, it's kind of, you don't talk to parents. Sometimes they don't realize that their child has an absence many days as they have. So this mentor allows them to recognize that they have an absence. Another thing is number three, the math books. That is, we're doing this in conjunction with Ranger. And each grade level will choose a particular book. Mr. Davis will, and I forget, I apologize, Christine, I probably Christine, maybe her, but I don't think she's married. But anyway, they will develop questions and they will be on strike, I believe, with these type of challenges that they have. And their school will, it's going to be midway, you know, winning these awards. Number four, the attendance challenge. We have, I really noticed when we came into the plaques that after each nine weeks, we get the attendance for each grade level, including grade five. The plaque is either given to the way, or to Ranger, or I think it was the start of last year. We want most all of them, so again, we have to practice our students attending and we have to. Number five, there is Milton, that's what the banner stays for. Each child will be able to travel and work on this scale award here today. She's provided for us, and they'll take the students over to Milton. They will be able to purchase a book through this grant. So it's, and you can stop me anytime, but questions are whatever, sure, so I can answer everything about this grant. Number six, through our after-school program, it provides a lot of extra things. I've been, this is Gilda Laura, she spoke about the math scientists, these are some things that it provides to provide this gentleman, wonderful job, great knowledge in science, and the kids absolutely love it. I mean, our tenants, I'm sure, I noticed last year, I'm sure she was saying on Tuesday, we have a lot of tenants, you know, on that ticket day, because they're not having this. But we also have classes that provide some of those other things. Number seven, our responsible student program centers, it provides, allows us to have other types of rewards as they were for new students during this. Number eight, partnership with Lincoln Community Care Center. We're waiting to get a position, I think he will be here, one day, we understand you. But all we need is internet service for, maybe a separate internet service. So that might be a need, but we need to ask for, and that's tied right now to, to that before. Okay, Mr. Davis is working on it, so hopefully we can get that up and running and get a position over from the Community Care Center. And that will really help in the sense that with this grant, the students are, they have a sword, or whatever they need. Patricia, they can give their right in the schools, they're packing the school, they go to position, that's our school. And then this grant also provides ten payment nights, we do some trainings, social, these are prizes for parents who do some of those things for parents and students. Yes. Um, well, for example, I'm not sure what is this fourth grade, how is, both schools, and they will agree on a particular book. And there might be a box or a challenge, use that as an example. And the fourth grade students have Ranger injury and fourth grade students midway on injury would read that. And then Mr. Davis and Christina would develop questions. And then they will sky, and they will ask these questions, and the kids that answer, the group that answers the most questions, and they will go in. And that's what the battle looks, and I think we, the different grade levels, and that's what this grant provides. So people like to, I think, for the kids, and they're going to be, so, yeah.
Obviously, you're, you have a whole competition there, especially with other schools.
That's the American way, I think, and we like, we like competition, you know, kids like competition. And I think if you make it competitive, you get more interest, and it's, you know, you're able to actually participate.
Sorry, everyone.
Oh, no, that's what. All right, and I think the next thing, Ms. Kessler, poster, Kessler, she's going to talk to us on this. All right?
Well, they said since I was a teacher here that I had to speak at this twice to you. I was volunteering, you know, I talked about it. This is one of my favorite things at our school. This is our responsible students program, we call them a stand for success. And as you can see, our act for staying. Every day, the kids come to school, they have a chance to earn their standing. In the past, they got to earn, or they had to earn one a week. But we changed it because we have a lot of input from parents saying that it wasn't quite fair the way we did it. So we took their, their thoughts and concerns into consideration, and how we did it this year. So instead of doing one week, they decided to do it one every day. And then at the end of the first nine weeks, or the second, ninth, third, and fourth, we would decide how many they needed in total in order to participate in the activity. Our faculty senate had noted that they at least needed ninety, they needed ninety percent of their points in order to participate in the stand activity. Because we want to stress to them that, yeah, I mean, it's okay to maybe come to school or stay, or things like that. We, we don't want it to become a habit of them not showing up, not bringing them, or things like that. So that's why we set that bar so high, because we do have very high expectations for our students. So each one of the letters in the stand represents something. S is strive for success, T is treat others with respect. I know both of those have to do with our character and our behavior at school. So of course, students who are maybe not acting the right way in class, they're one of those, they're staying for a week here. The A stands for attend school daily. And we do stress for our students, in parts of attendance at our, you know, our school. And so if students do not show up for the lead day, they have lost their standing. However, if they do have a doctor's excuse or a funeral excuse, it is excuse. If it's just a mere note, it's a shame. The N is they need to be prepared. This includes bringing their backpack, their agenda, having homework, everything. And if they don't bring something, they lost their standing. And I know even in first grade, I stress that back, I'm like, where's your backpack? I don't tell them that, like, they lost their standing for that. Like, it's responsibility, and that's why I advise students, right, you need to stress back. The G is get to school on time and stay all day. So students who are coming in partying, they need to understand that that's not acceptable. Teachers cannot come in late, you know, our principal will not come in late every day, it's not acceptable. So even this is helping with their work ethic, so it will be quite necessary and important. We do have a group activity coming up this Friday, because our end of the nine weeks was just this past Monday. So we cluttered up all of our staying points, and we are about to do our pumpkin bowling. So the students will burn, they're ninety percent of their points, get to participate in their, their pumpkin bowling Friday. Our next one, I know our student council has already said, the next nine weeks for the rest of the school year, the second one will be a prize auction. The third one will be a minute to commit activity, and the fourth will be a meeting in front. And I know especially in my class, and I'm sure other teachers do the same thing, but I'm really trying to work it up. I'm like, all right, guys, we need to do the pumpkin bowling this time. We need to think about how we're going to be able to do the prize auction. I really build it up, because I want them to know how important it is to be responsible. I really build it up, because I want them to know how important it is to be responsible. Um, just another random part of our, I know this should have been a little bit earlier in the presentation. We did talk about how we recently bought a grant to help us build a greenhouse. And in the last couple of years, our pre-K, none of our classes have really wanted to do, uh, have a greenhouse so they can wear different things. Um, so we put seven hundred and fifty dollars towards building this small greenhouse at Midway, it's right outside of our playground. And we did have students and parents from the community come and build that forest. It's ready to go, although it's in the better times, so we have to wait until it's established.
That's me. Okay, you've got your student safety and health, um, you have a lot of things here. Uh, for our student safety here, we have the case that it's solving the building. Uh, you know, we have that, uh, with the com and the cameras, so we can see actually who's coming in in the morning. Um, you know, after, they usually use the closes after the buses go through, the parents go through. And we have visitors, they have them ready to be sent here, actually able to access the, uh, the bombs, which is recently, that's the new bombs, uh, and the good offices, all staff members here, so they can, you know, it's easy access and be able to stay out. Okay, it's, um, it's a small, you know, you folks have seen, it's a, it's a very small little bomb that we have here. And, uh, there's a little sensor in several areas called entrance areas that you scan the color that, and lots of little cameras coming in.
Can that detect, show, who'd use that?
It actually does, it will, it will actually, it does a lot of neat things. Uh, it will, you know, like, for example, a lot of teachers coming in to the building, I know I was here over the weekend, uh...
I can actually go to a website, um, and I can, I can access it at times. Like, Mr. Toll, if I don't want him to be here seven, ten to three, ten, I can set his phone for that.
Anybody worry?
Each one has a number, he's assigned to that number, so if he comes in the building on the weekend, I, you know, I can check to see that he was in the building, or somebody used his phone, you know.
You can identify that.
Yes.
If they're on camera, uh, when they did interview you and so forth. And of course, our security system that we have here, I think we have it also, uh, you know, you can, uh, you actually have to, uh, you know, turn off, you know, there's a code for that, there's a code to get into the, uh, through the gates, you know, they have staff there. You know, the codes, but we're seeing the answers, which are not good. And that's where they're screened by the secretary or Mr. Davis.
And even the maintenance, Steve, or anybody, uh, from the central office who has one of our phones, you know, really is assigned to them. So we know, if, we know that if he comes in the building and what time this is.
When they came and left.
Yeah, so you know exactly when they came and when they left, and I'm not sure if that's...
Well, if I'm leaving, we wouldn't know, because they don't have to swap their phone, you know.
When you're going out, the gate automatically opens and lets you out, but we would know the time of the end of the building at that time. But, no, we do have a camera, we know on that end, so we would know when they were actually leaving. We can see that it wouldn't be...
Yeah, we would have... Does that work on all doors or just part of doors?
Uh, certain doors, uh, like the, the main entrance where the kids, when they get off the bus, that's, that's the one that we ask the parents and staff, uh, the visitors, uh, coming to. But we, we have some here, um, we don't have one for this one, so they couldn't get into this one, because we don't have someone stationed here. We have one for the staff that'll be here on the side, we have one here for visitors, and we have signs up to show where we want them to actually come in. It makes it easier, and they come in on that end, and the secretaries, they can pursue them and get them access. They're coming on this one, uh, a lot of times, they may not realize that they can check in the office after they've arrived. So that's why we ask them to use one of those. All right, number three, um, as you're being school, I think you have ten drivers annually that will be on pace to add, uh, to the building. And number four, on the, uh, the twelve, the eighteen, I'm sorry, the eighteen, uh, we have a contact with this place, a contact officer Lawrence, and I don't know if you can say please, and he will actually be here to provide hours training. And that's, you know, that's the type of training which, um, if we have someone that is actually in the building and how we can actually get out of the building. You know, and, you know, what means that the children, and staff have lived, you know, you know. Sometimes people begin in the building to receive the home news two times. So this is, this officer Lawrence is going to train the personnel here on what we can do to try to, you know, sell some action to the kids, I'll say. Uh, again, number five, as we talked about earlier, one entrance exit for all the students. Um, six, you know, we have, we have a, um, the way our playground is, the way our school is designed, we have to have staff stationed, because we have, uh, in front of the building, we have most of our playground, as you saw when you came in, is the front, which is actually the back, coming through. Uh, but we also have the ask-all courts up here, so we have to stay at station personnel, which where they do the primary, the intermediate grades where we go out, we have staff members that are stationed at different areas to, to, to store students of the day. Uh, number seven, we have our code red procedures, and we have done all of those this year, students understand these. Uh, we were able to, we had to do this, this past spring, uh, I mean, you know, the bank here was wrong, actually, we saw that on the news. Kids were wonderful, you know, I, I couldn't have asked for better, they were, they behaved, I mean, they were, they were chaos. Um, it was actually, you know, I wanted to say that the kids could turn that into a time. Now, we have, and I'm going to talk about it later, but, you know, we happen to be on, um, on play, you know, in this alternate place. So possibly the main driver actually could create a front school, a little crowd there. So we're not really sure on that, but that's a possibility. Uh, we have here, at our school, we have crisis intervention teams, and it seems like, you know, we have a team for everything. And it's, you know, horrible that we have to do that now, and it's a society, it's a times of believing, and, you know, they have to prepare, they have to protect, it's not children, you know, and parents can trust those to do that, and do best there, but we take care of them. Uh, we did number nine, which is evacuation plan. And we actually, uh, did this plan in performance with the kids yesterday, matter of fact. Uh, our, uh, evacuation plan actually allows us, if there would be, this is, if there would be, for instance, as you can see, four or G is right above us, and I know, uh, several years ago, there was actually a car. It's in summer, they were having summer school here, but there was actually a car that went off the interstate, or off the corridor, and actually came down into the driveway here. So, you know, we, we talked to the children, and that's, that's primarily what this is, if there would be a tanker or something that would actually come down, and, and we'd explain and, and discuss with the students based upon where it would happen, where we would actually evacuate the kids. But we actually take them to New Haven Baptist Church, which is just down the street here from us. And that would be a place to meet and tell the students. But we had a mall tour yesterday, and we took them out of the building, and I couldn't get over how quickly they got out and how open-handed they were. We took them down the drive, across the street here into, I believe, this is the offering, um, the offering parking lot. And they all lined up there, always accounted for, and all, and so, and so it worked out well. I think, you know, you have to do this, and you have to have these drills in order to make sure the real thing occurs, you know, with air. And, uh, we also have here, um, the walking trail. And a few years ago, when Mrs. Work was here, we, who I'll do this through the Health and Schools Grant. Uh, she was able to acquire some money to actually do a paving around the school here. And, uh, three days a week, our students actually walk, and, you know, on average, I'll go to the primary, but, you know, intermediate, we usually try to have them to walk about three, four laps around that during the designated time that we have, we're able to, to exercise. And, uh, one of the things that I wrote today, that West Virginia has actually been, or given, with forty-nine, comes from the East State nation, and our healthy, um, habits that we have are lacking. So this is one of the things we have to start in the element, we have to start from the young, teach them what is correct. And that leads me to the last part here. We have a nutrition lady coming up in primary grades, I believe, K through two. I forget the lady's name, I see her, I speak towards, um... Jill Paint, uh, from Marshall University, and I know she agrees with all, you know, like this lady. And in intermediate grades, which you know I like, we have a lady, Mrs. Flynn, that, uh, that's three intermediate. But they give both of them a marvellous shot, uh, with this, when the kids come out, getting so much understanding of what is good for the body, what's not good for the body, and what they can be fooled with advertising. So they both let you do a marvellous shot of this. So, that being said, moving to the last point, I know you folks are tired, I understand, I am too. I don't want to bore you too long, but, and I understand that, you know, we, we saw the governor's cut, that, you know, possibly be some more, but these are some things that we would actually, we, you know, my parents always ask me, is it something that you want, or is it something you need? And some of these we actually, um, it's, it's not a one thing. Uh, the first one is, we, you know, we are one of the very few schools in the county that's actually increasing in the world. You know, we increase every year, and we're all, we're seven years, we're in the world area. Um, but we're happy to share a counselor, we have the largest elementary school in the county along with us. Now, the last count, I had, we had over three hundred plus students here in pre-K through, uh, five. And I think West Ham has, uh, probably, probably over five hundred. We're sharing a counselor with him, we really have these, you know, and our society is, I explained earlier, you know, this is, is the, how we do today, and what we have to deal with. We really need a full-time counselor, you know. We also need a technology specialist, we need someone that can, can actually come in and do lessons, teach lessons, you know. I'm, uh, sometimes saying Jack Altrey is the master of none, you know, and I'm not a master of technology. I can, you know, I can, I can get my, myself through a little bit of it, but we actually need that. We need someone also to, uh, you know, again, I'm not sure we all hear this from every school, but, you know, the technology, those that we have are, are spread very thin. Uh, we have to wait a long time sometimes for all, um, safety issues that exist with computers, when somebody goes down. We don't have, you know, we're not created to actually be able to change, we have a classroom teacher. Uh, so we have to wait for, you know, for the two gentlemen who come from the county, and, you know, there's a couple of them, and that's it. And they're at, they're to all the different schools around the county. The other one, the last one, and the whole one shut up, is the, the intercom system. Uh, huge, huge concern here, and we have a problem. Uh, again, we had, we had, uh, third, fifth grade, fourth, fifth grade, I apologize, fourth, fifth grade out in play, we have huge other kids out there. Uh, there was no way of making it, but Mr. Davis, a lot more, he ran out with Bullhorn, and he had code red, code red, you know.
He's seen our fancy guy in the building.
Yeah, you know, a lot of all the students in the number. Uh, uh, but, you know, we had, we had to make sure that, you know, all the children were accounted for, and we got in, and very quickly, they understood, we practiced this, so we knew what, the kids knew what to do. But the point is, we had no way other than him coming out of the back and letting us know. We had no intercom system outside that would allow us to access that.
Okay, I see the speaker there, so you have interior.
Yeah, we have interior, we don't have, if it doesn't work, we need to be outside. So we...
Our intercom is through our telephone system.
Yeah, that's all we have.
And if somebody's on the phone...
You can't be...
They'll ring, and they will, they will hear it even.
So that would happen to be all the telephone, talking to a parent, and that happened, I would have no idea, you know, what was going on, because it does not go through, if you're on the telephone, even if you hang up, and they start, and you forget, because that's happened to me in the past.
I have a very big point, maybe, if Mr. Davis is, if he made it like an announcement.
He could make, if you were inside the building, that you can't hear that on the outside, it only goes through the speakers on the telephone. Just like this telephone that we have over here, it goes through on that, it's not one of these speakers here.
What function is this?
That was an old system that we had.
Those are day, yeah.
If you remember the old system that you had here, you click a little...
Here.
Yeah, that's what that was, but still, that wouldn't work outside, so we need something to let us know. And I'm sure this probably exists in other schools in the county, but, you know, I know it affected us, and we had no way to know, you know, playground also.
Well, I had interviewed, you told us, said the speaker there.
No, that was, it just hasn't been taken down, um...
I don't even know where the...
Yeah, it used to be that was a black box, I think, I remember, and I'm sure, uh, they mentioned some, though, it's there in county. I'm not sure, I think there is one in the central office, I saw one there. Uh, but, you know, that would actually, as far as inside, that would actually be, uh, a good thing, because, you know, if something like that occurred, it's, it's still not something that's going to work on the outside.
And so if Mr. Davis wants to make an announcement to the school in general, he can't...
He can, if somebody, he can, as long as no one's on the phone. But if, if two teachers happen to be on the telephone, talking to a parent, you know, or something, then it does not, it does not go through the classrooms.
That's quite true.
Right, there, those two classrooms will be...
Sure, that could come through the telephone.
It goes through the telephone, yeah, and it's the system that we have, that I think probably several schools have the same system, so, uh... But, yeah, it's not very loud, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's limited to the ability of the parent.
It's not being on speakerphone.
Yeah, it's not being on speakerphone, is what it is. But, again, it doesn't work outside, so, you know, if you folks could, you know, try to find some, track us around somewhere. You know, we need something really outside, because we never know what we're doing that we did last year. You know, and had, you know, if it were, I don't know, you know, what we would have done, you know, and, and, because we had no idea what was going on. You know, I guess, you can see the helicopters would have been down, and gone, the playground, and might have suspected, so, you know. But anyway, uh, uh, the last thing, again, I want to thank you folks for the school issue, because we are, we have any use, we have plenty of things in our, so...
You need more of this, all this, for...
All this, for, okay.
You can't be right up.
All right, we, we do, on behalf of the leadership committee and, and the, so, we just, we thought, we do appreciate you for coming out, and we want to make you feel welcome, anytime you want, you're welcome, having my classrooms observed, asking any questions. Uh, and my classrooms, I'll be, I'm sure, I'll be able to teach you stuff somewhere.
Want a kiss? Come on down to first grade.
I'm not sure, any questions, that's it?
Right, anything else? Uh, all of your classes are self-identified?
Uh, other than the fifth grade. Uh, fifth grade, we, we try and get them a little prepared for, um, middle school. So Mrs. Agans and I, we, we departmentalized a few classes, okay, on that. And again, just trying to, um, collect...
Transition, transition in distance.
Thank you. I think we've got the price on the, on the church.
I have not looked into that, um, I would say they're kind of pricing, I don't know, especially with the installation.
Well, check, you've got to wake up firing cord reading, well.
Yeah, these are already wired, and I assume they're already wired, and there are outside the building, there are intercoms outside the building.
I don't know whether those work or not. I, you know, I know when we had the old system, because I was here when I had the old system, and I'm not sure, I don't recall ever being able to hear, uh, those old stickers, because I think they're probably organized, that's outside of the building.
It's always been the tele, since I've been here, it's been the telephones. Like I said, I don't even know that the devices it is, that we look into, it's pretty, it's making an announcement.
You know, I don't know if there's something that we could, you know, you could add to the bail system that we have, you know, to be added to that, that would give a different type of ring, or a different type of warning during something like that. I'm not sure how to program that, you can hear that, you can hear the bail. I'm not sure how to program that. You can hear that, you can hear the bail.
If you hit someone here, look to check if someone else is there. Help to look at anyone.
Okay.
Okay. And I think now, it's okay. So we think, okay, we should just get water, we should probably. There's brownie, he didn't come here.
He's a world support, Mr. Davis.
I did, I did Mr. Curry's tweet from last night.
You know, he, do those over here make some, you know, make some jobs.
He had a chair for a business case. Hit your back out.
I knew we were going to have to.
They're my support.
Thank you. Very good. Appreciate y'all coming down, taking your time over, taking care of you. But, you know, I care about our possible things. And a couple of things you mentioned, you will take it again. Appreciate that one. Okay. Thanks very much. Okay. After the presentation, we'll move to our next area. This is administrative section, that one. Say hurry. This is the second one.
Item A, Marshall University student, head of late, perform observation. Need help. Guide by the middle school, fall semester. Item B is a degree to command a boot to provide transportation to a student to handle PKA two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year according to the terms of the contract. Paid for through special education plans. Item C is a degree to ensure to provide transportation for a student to West Ham on the trip for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year according to terms of the contract, also funded through special education. Item D is a degree to state office in West Virginia to provide auditing services to campus financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand fifteen according to the terms of the degree funded through. Item E, to award a bid to Senco for repair of the business related workers at the rate of forty-nine ninety per hour. No truck charter solution for shipments of workers related equipment with twenty percent above cost for parts for the current fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand sixteen. Services may be made to many times, but you can't just pause. Item N, how to stay private, call for personnel. Item G, school volunteers who on occasion may also service with us to check the hours for athletic events, academic competitions, school outings, and complete your volunteer retention. Last item, H, to abolish the following policy for wet as well as related and industry guided lines of course affecting immediately. That's policy eighty-six sixty, transportation of students by private vehicle time given to the coffee. Mr. Lindell, I studied all this policy a few days ago. Actually, some California's intervention that there is such a policy. And what stood out to us was the fact that references. The Dutch reference, if you wouldn't have the policy, this is to be the third or fourth line down. Hence, no person shall be approved for transportation of students in a private vehicle who is not a employee of this board and approved volunteer and in order to parent a student or volunteer in this county and hold it currently valid license to operate a private vehicle in the state of West Virginia unless otherwise stated that one person is limited to transporting non-vehicle students. So reportedly, the language of this policy that's a concern is it says approved volunteer. And that is not allowed as we have communicated for certain months. Transportation, private vehicle, vehicle. This is not something that we put out in the station. So this policy is really a template against the grain of what we've been communicating as well as administrative guidelines and the rules a little longer. So it's one great to your attention. And there's a conversation about what we will refer to. What's another county doing in terms of restrictive policies and proud of. Whether something, they're modeling policy alone or just to abolish what this policy says on the board.
Now, are you talking about eighty-six sixty?
Eighty-six sixty of the policy. So that first page is the policy. Second page is the administrative guidelines related to the policy. And then the last three pages are the fours, associated with the actual doubt. And when this reads, if a private parent or a parent or a student making a drive.
Is this kind of previous to the law? Is this can refine them to either coordinate or drop service students? And others off record. If I'm a parent, can I drive other students or all my own children?
Yeah.
Is that clear? What brings this?
It's not.
And then the partner, what would be it?
That would be younger, Mr. Curry. I have sex. Talk about the fact that employees may transport students via the parent's commission, whether utilizing their own private vehicle or any other.
But I mean, so the way it's written now, they'd be able to use their own private vehicle and transport students.
Is not chosen because of CDL. That's, that's where it's placed. Is not chosen because of CDL. That's, that's where it's placed.
So you're, I'm higher than agree with you. We start and revise this or abolish this and start all over again. See, it's meant for everybody to test who we think we ought to go with. I would like to see how some other candidates handles it also. I think, I kind of think of different activities where there are few, not very many students. I don't think golf or baseball. Okay, you got the headquarters in, so it's not really something typically the usual school bus.
And in that situation, I'm going to ask the spirit is the golf coaches. We also plan to be able to transfer those students.
So I think with the county vehicle, you have a lot of eligibility, certainly necessary plus the person who's involved in the board, the board as far as liability cover. I guess it has been some concern expressed in the past about private those people who aren't employees of the board and their insurance government. From the way this reads, I might have insurance coverage today. It doesn't have tomorrow.
And as obviously the concern is where it has been raised through the book as far as because it says that they have to have the offer of a liability. And then Mr. Curry's worked this out in the past. If someone could ever pick up a lot of the insurance, we need to drop it a few days later. Time to renew requires this policy to show that they have some policy.
I would say that talking with parents driving, being one of them, their own child. And there, I think, there needs to be guidelines on how that's done. Understanding some schools, like I said, they had a football game. They could get a ride on the school bus because they were the team. But there might be permission given for parents to drive their own children back from the game.
That's right. Between the parent and the parent who went to the school and the dad decided to drop their school to the parents decide to drop their child.
Obviously, those are the kind of, I think we want to have specific to state. This idea of one parent transporting other children that aren't theirs. I think that would be a concern.
That's a concern for the administration. You know, unless, unless, if it's period of school day, unless it's someone that's on the verge of, you know, if it's not the parent, it should be someone else's identified who may be able to protect their child. So if it's going to be the parent, we're seeing a list about that, emergency, period of school day. So we could have something similar to that.
Yeah, we have. Once you get away from the parent himself, I get a little bit nervous.
I feel like, I feel like making a parent in your school, calling him on the way.
Right.
Not driving from that way.
We all aim to be on the way. Right.
I'm not really that much resource to, 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 I'm curious as to whether or not that's what their policies are allowing for.
But you're kind of like the honor system, you know, there are many, you know, free time insurance. But there's always the possibility that someone could have some wants to stay there that will have insurance. And if they don't have insurance, we can agree with that.
Well, in my conversations with the department, because this question's come up several times in the next few years, communicating with you that it's no different if you go to the hall game on Friday night for a parent, a grandparent, a man who's all in works to protect their child, and it is for them to come during the school day, decide their child. So that's, that's what the department just wants.
So I, if someone checked a student out of school, he could have the same liability concerns there. They could. The other thing I would like to look at closer is the idea for a school, for employees of the board, to transport students who are in something other than a war vehicle. You know, we feel, you know, here in a war vehicle, certainly that is the liability and coverage and plus the personal report. If you get in their private vehicle, I just wonder if you have that same protection. I'd like to answer these, but I'd like to see whether those, I think it gets answers.
I would want to see that. Grab on, share.
But in, transporting, but in, for the students would require a school bus. Kind of for drive. What if I wanted to leave my kids? Would that affect them? No, I mean, these are kind of things I think we need to express in, have stated here. Soccer here is twenty kids. About another one, three minutes. Right. Yeah, we're, yeah, they.
We need to communicate some of this to our other staff. They're going to come on a team bus. Here comes someone running up to the door, going on, get this particular student back and back to the hall. It's a, who is responsible for our restaurant? We need to, we need to communicate what, what, that we finish it.
Well, then, I agree. Then our other one, vehicle handling.
Yeah, all people need to understand this policy, our restaurant.
I mean, they, I may drive football one time, baseball, and I don't know everybody. I'm just thinking, how are they just going to have fixes if they're wanting to drive something? But driver would have to have some kind of access to this.
We rely on coaches in most of these relationships. And if it's, if it's something that's right after school, especially if it's maybe a sub bus operator, not from here to kids, not from here to pairs, they're able to contact the central office or the transportation department and tend to nearby radio and phone to be able to pull from leaving that student's emergency information to find that person, not the person that's wanting that child. It's a type of protecting child. So we do have, you know, safety measures.
But then, is the extra curriculum, I guess, you rely on the coaches.
Right.
They're able to get.
Right.
All right. Well, I think my idea, everyone. I agree with you. Okay. Anybody have anything, any other question or comments on any of the administrative items? Okay. Off the question, that long as it's. Okay, finally, a statement. Carolyn, the last second line.
Item A is the county mention to the following retired employees under option pay, blame, paid from county access to date, any correction. But for Lindell, Ilwark, we want to change the effective date from nine one fifteen to be eight one fifteen. It's written, we got to place the date in the yard. Is county mention of an extra month as well as his pension, you say? Item B, scheduled invoices totaling three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, thirty-four dollars, twenty percent attachment, invoices relevant to the county office. Item C, monthly financial statements for the month ending July third of August through two thousand fifteen. Questions, please see.
Okay. Finally, final office button. Yeah. Personnel. I need a motion by Mr. Curry. Say, say, comment, please.
Item A, this is important, short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B is transport professional personnel. Item C, employee service personnel. Item D is transport service personnel. Item E is employee effective working personnel. Item M is season absence. Item G, reservations for retirements. At the bottom of personnel schedule, we see we have nine. Since all service personnel posted in SLC sixteen dash twenty-seven, typically part-time side, not a professional, for the new customer position. It was posted incorrectly the first time and we had salaries on the page. It was posted correctly. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Item B is all special equipment service personnel posted in PCS sixteen dash seventeen, special education, thus a, we no longer need that position that caused the student to, to, to. And finally, the minute minutes of January twenty-two thousand seventeen to retire a little more to be effective July third of August. Also, I think I have a, Mr. Curry, to the right. I'm sorry. We just, in the hand, it is the, our, our office. These are our current vacancies that we still have. Item C, big way elementary, we posted the second grade, other position. It needs to be the third time, Mr. Curry. Well, we may afford it for, I can't believe we can't fill it with that position. Preschool position which will be posted. Preschool teacher has taken a job outside of the university. Item, all right, number two, special education teacher, three law. This is one who has taken time to forward that successfully. Item number three is animal PKA, math position that we're posting.
Amy would have been ready to hire a secondary teacher. Personally hired. Lynn County High School is still working with math teachers, special education teachers, public school math positions, um, so any kind of time, unsuccessful. Special education positions are probably the most important for the good times just to be started. Amy is posting a social studies position for the first time in the name of their high school. Desire to win and win and it's higher for completely our ability to replace her with fully certified teachers. She deserves it for the course of a year unless we're able to find a good place. Uh, take a break more time on this. West Ham elementary, we just hired a special education teacher next year. She's a teacher in other schools, so she she has to take the until next week. Range of vacancies, God, I don't understand, continue to post for health position. And Harms will continue to post for English, two special education positions. We have fourteen vacancies. And we're better than many of those counties around this region. They're also struggling particularly with the reservation.
Midway here is basically an elementary. But approximately could be where you could get here easily. That's it.
The other person, it's all happening.
By any questions, public now.
Um, all persons, all members, yes. I'm concerned. Here's the board committee comment.
Mr. Mickey.
I know I mentioned you here in our hundredth meal, but thank you for being such a gracious host. As well as today, I've been prepared for Dr. Marano's visit. He had a great visit to your Midway Elementary as well as with all. Students really represented the school so well. He, uh, he's quite impressed by you. Actually, personally, I've not spent much time around him. He was very passionate about his work. He is still very much a teacher in art, there's no question. Senior graduate students, so it's almost like he is in class. He's had his conversations with. He's really engaging, pulls everything on in, that is just his personality. Sean was able to meet him today as well.
Great guy, right.
So I appreciate you being there to be able to come and visit. Uh, he's, uh, he's on tour, he's with the forty-third county, but he will have visited since, uh, he can say this is a continued. He, uh, he talked about the importance of good attendance, that's really his mantra, his attendance matter initiative that he has. He talked about good grades, preparing and ready for the next level, whatever that may be. It's elementary, middle school, middle school, high school, high school or not if you have, uh, public secondary education. And, and, and those people do talk about being good, about being real man. And, and situations when there's bullying that's going on, to not be afraid to go to an adult and let an adult know what's going on for the situation itself. So I, I was, as I said, I was very, very impressed with him today. And I was pleased and honored that he, uh, was here to, uh, to visit our school. Once he's finished, he's fifty-five minutes, he told me to come back. This is another school, high school. Quick. Let's see. I'm on a roll, right. All right. Um, just want to let you know that Amy's here tonight, I'll be meeting with Dan Ferguson, who's here tomorrow. So you're taking a look at the quarter or G location. It's just, it's really just a mile from here, go up to the, to the four lane, turn a right at the line. Almost exactly in line. Uh, this, that's out on the. Time is usually.
There's time page, there's a, time page is right there, right?
Across from Princeton.
Yeah.
Right. So we're, we're gonna take a look, there's a problem where. So he's, he's gonna kind of give us some idea whether or not he thinks that's a, he's a problem, it's viable, uh, usable to him, that's for sure. And if so, he don't work with that cost. Some cases even want it, the cost to be able to build a store in location to, to get to the board at a later date. So I'm excited about being with him tomorrow. His, his schedule pretty busy, so he won't be to do anything further than visit that's location tomorrow. He's gonna come back at a later date and take a look at the West Ham elementary department. As we've talked about also the possibility of moving out of those middle school kids to that location. He can give us some idea as to whether or not there's enough room to be open at that location. As well as a cost of those will be one major problem. I'm also gonna have a conversation with, uh, Mr. Ferguson tomorrow regarding the possibilities submitted in the capacity. That's a small project, uh, maybe a dollars or less. I talked to me and Ashley today in the school building. He thinks it's a good idea for us to give some thought considerations more ahead. What they're gonna make us do is to kind of look at the game for some elementary. Uh, build with your add-on for the middle class or the students who join the exam session. You know, that's kind of the concern in front of every year when we, uh, listen to LSI C-Press attention. So he, he said, consider that as possible phase one, if the board laid it on the sides and we've got a list of Mr. West Ham. Then that project will be phase two. So this would not be the way that it will, in future projects, that's, uh, we're looking at this. Which makes sense to accomplish what Mr. Ray said. But I'm gonna only get, I'm only getting the big purposes type of thing.
Now, as a part of that, we would, you know, figure out how much money you'd require.
The thing, uh, we talked about that today, it's a twenty percent match. So if it's a, if it's a five dollar, half a thousand dollar project, um, can afford to have a couple of thousand dollars.
So we said that, I guess there'd be a mix on the cost and, uh, if you have an idea what cost would be.
So I'm, I'm hopefully I'm be able to kind of extract ideas to Mr. Ferguson to, to, uh, this quickly. Give us some idea of what the cost would be, whether or not this is something that will, uh, this time.
Does he make to consider that, like, this is the cost?
January before, Mr. David, uh, there's not a whole lot yet to be lifted in terms of documentation which provide. But there is a consensus that you have to have, uh, you have to work with the architect, architect for initial use costs. There's a lot of this today. But, uh, it'd actually be very costly. He said that school would really fully, um, really likes the projects where you're getting out modules out of P N X. That, that those have been projects the past few years.
Now, as a part of this, you get a feel for the location for these offices, uh, these four rooms. And then I think the, if there were to be a middle school built here. The location for that would be, this is a big floor. Would you have to pay all these, you know, jobs for it?
Yes. There's a lot of problems.
I know we've talked about middle school there before, how it would sit all this, I don't really care. You've got the firm on Android, which is, uh, this might be kind of fun that you, this, like, we'd say where its location would be.
The energy here is, is.
What it was.
I hopefully the next will be highest position in relation to ownership. And they, they need to have some lighting.
Keep it in account.
Keep it in the process.
Yes, all right. I see, I'm gonna wait for the process. I've, I've had, uh, I've had two requests last week. One from Lynn County High School, Van Director, Mrs. Cook. And most recently today, a request from John Martin. And the driver's teacher, the driver's teacher, speech teacher, Lynn County High School. Uh, both, both teachers wanting to take students, uh, on a outside trip over this river. Man is wanting to go to Disney. They have, they have a bit of factor of someone, his parents, right there, someone who is educated in this school, that that is not issue. Work would be coming to the board for money to participate or go on this trip. All expenses would be paid. And Mr. Martin is wanting to take the little students to New Orleans City. Education, like, trip. So the, the issue is certainly supplied that, including calendar hours. Now, if we're going to be clear whether the board has an option of looking at spring break and not coming to make up those lost days. So I want you to do your hands up as for sure, this is something that's gonna come to. Mrs. Cook or Mr. Peters, right there, to, to Martin. This, this request and to be able to begin now and get it official, uh, to be able to take those student trips outside. Because of the money, the debt, I have a front, you know, the families, there's all of them. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. So if you want to add.
How many days are there available to make that face without going to spring break or end of the year?
It's either way, uh, it's a hospital.
Maybe not. And then, do you think we could go up to June the third? May or November again.
Right, I also encourage those, one, two, three, the rest, there's two days, also have two, four, five, six, seven. All of a sudden, two days is, and.
Makes a difference. The last day of school, if that was the first day.
If we didn't use any more, that's a good fortune.
So I'm saying we got, we used everyone. Then there will be happy days to make up any days. Fourteen days. So we have, we can, we can say that we have eight plus fourteen. We've got, like, high school. So we can, we can do days like that. Do you recall last year having the days made like that?
It was maybe six or seven days, is this what it's?
Well, I mean, you made it all, but we were there and then somebody.
After a few days, it depends, it was six or seven days.
Well, plus the eight days, so.
Right, in addition to the.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say that, that it had been a twenty-one fifteen or something, something. Like, uh, so in worst case scenario, if you didn't use spring break at all, you could have eight plus fourteen. You can make up twenty-two days without the last spring break.
Is the plan I've got is for now, to go along the streets, do you have to make up any, any, uh, imagination?
Well, yes, yes. About, about eighty-six, sixty-four, sixty-six, sixty-seven.
I think that's, you know, our good, that, that's a good problem, I think, that is, if you permit, or, or kids who they dead. And honestly, that's not a good thing, it's not a good thing. Then if you're having, if, 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 it's okay, go, or anything.
And here's my actual, I have some also good, like, also, it's not a question, it's your, uh, like, at times. Uh, I think those two are the same.
Well, then there's, I'm talking to you, you did all this, so, uh, the man's on the media order doing this, so if we go to, eight months, uh, I just think, well, I've given this a thought, we talked about the other day. If we were not utilized spring break and had this, I don't know if it would have to be hedged in stuff, because we did have our own business manner. And between now and April, it's fifty days, and say, you know, things off, we'll start off, you know. But if we went into it, you know, some of the parts of it, you seem to have, then you could make up twenty-two days to be not utilized spring break. Uh, I'd rest you all to think about that. But you, you, there has to be, everybody knows now that we have to make up these days unless the last day of the year is off. And we are normally have to even make up a spring break, maybe or a combination of the two. And if you had a normal winter where you get missed a whole lot of days, you're gonna be in school January, February, March, usually. He does, he does days off, maybe. And this, uh, then if you, uh, if you, if you rent it, like, a lot of you sometime. Uh, this, food for thought here, just trying to see what we're, if we were to, uh, we're willing to do these things during spring break, but everybody understanding that it would leave us to go due to twenty-ninth, you know, worst case scenario. Last year we used a few days of spring break, then went in the year. I just, I'm beginning to, I just wanna see what you're about to think about, if you want. I just think if, when people go spring break and you're down there saying to everybody else, maybe you can stay, and it's okay to go off, off, spring break.
We have communicated to, uh, staff, to his parents about the policies, regardless of protection, sure, it's a spring break.
And we would, like, see, see, but it's like, we're.
And, uh, now, as you can, it's, it's.
Sure, it's on the way, I guess they're gonna ask about the bar.
One of the red, the man, the dark side, but this the wall drew up. So, uh, must spring breaks agree. They're going to be, they're going to be, obviously, it's all, I think, uh, it's a, it's a, uh, it's a, yeah, it's a, the, the, the land is taken. It's just that spatial open. I think that, 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 that's, 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 that's. My, my impression, I have a really, for some, for some, just kind of feeling out, just kind of seeing, it's a, it's a, for what to pursue. One thousand and forty-three. I hear that soon as we're, Paul, yes. As far as I know, that's still one, three hundred and sixty-five, right here.
My, my mayor Jeff, Mark, is using our school's month. So it gives the ties of that in as the former band director. That's the time of the year that they would invite high school bands to excel and have that attire to visit. So they tie that into the music in our school's month activities. And they showcase those experiences that last the hour.
Yeah, I was talking about, I was talking about, like, it's, I asked you, it's a softball game, uh, like, I guess, in the term, like, it's just South Carolina or something, or, uh, I don't know. I guess, like, the argument, uh, softball, because man is, uh, during this week, and why can't we go? So we just, we have, everybody has seen, fairly, we want to make up the education example, uh, the man. But, uh, it's fair, but that gets back to what I said earlier. Just make, make about a bit of the, just, then do you spring break, unless we have to be headed, and, uh, if, or if we're going to run a year, I mean, just half a dozen, or six, seven, yes, or.
I see both sides, but it, it still is spring break. Now, we, we didn't have this luxury back home, in my place, so it's new to me here, but it, it still is ingrained in people's mind as a week off school here, you know? So it's hard to blame the parents who might be paying for Disney already, month by month, knowing they're going to go or whatever, or, or any family who's always vacations out of time. It's hard to blame them. It's not like you guys have the power or the, um, you know, the ability to say, there's a ban on off travel. That's totally unrealistic, but you, you can't, I, I think it's unfair to expect people to happily fall in line with this.
Well, then you have Easter.
You do, yeah.
That's where it's complicated, but it does something, it adds to the, the idea of effectively.
Mm-hmm. So, it's, it's tough. I think it's unfair on parents, but it's, it's really unfair on you guys to have to make a call.
Honestly, you do that, there are always going to be those that are gonna go make the, these things, required for re-studying.
And that happened last year, and that happened in June as well. We got to June tenth, June eleventh, and Zara's classroom started to thin out.
That's part there, I think, uh, I place a lot of that blame on us. Because that can be saw, uh, at the school level, and the directors, the full ops. If schools know that they're gonna have school, when the teachers are teaching, and the schools have a lesson plan, they take grades right up to the end. And they're not gonna be there as they thought they were, so, um, so, a lot of that, and I, it's not just Lincoln County, I think it's all, uh, over there. Other counties where students were not in attendance, and so, so, I think you do have to extend the school year. It can be dealt with in a manner that students have, haven't had school with their freshmen, so. The reason they have taken advantage of that, because they, they, they had teachers in the past, who've got, all that, textbooks, all these kind of things. And that's not fault. So, um, I think that part we can solve, uh, make very clear, our president, that we expect instructions to go to the, or the, uh, then you probably know that the other day about the, the test testing.
It's the, uh, the assessment, uh, of the, uh, what states it to you, and it's been more, on, like, we're trying to walk through the details. Is to make the last two possibly three weeks school testing. This past year had thirty-six, the last thirty-six days of the school year, which is a test. And that was fluid and in lieu of the calendar. However, some agencies insist that we start a paragonia that, uh, that we finish there, as opposed to waiting for later. But it was brand new, and they wanted to know what to expect in terms of how long it takes to put it in the assessment. So what, what do you think will be, uh, today, uh, in some of our, so, I had, Mark, is there a bookie and try to make that last two weeks or three weeks the window of the assessment?
In a better, uh, I think, uh, we saw part of what we just were talking about, there is no longer an option, but you can score on it, because that's where you're supposed to be testing. And, and is your, is your understanding, they're considering, if you extend the school year, but that timeframe makes that, well.
They understand, they don't, who, if you add that, it's all tack, it's all good to test it, uh, with.
Because it's not a problem unique to our counties, it was all counties, that kind of approach that addresses issue of things. You just stay alive, I think. Okay, what do you, right, right, I think through all day. Right here, feeding the light here. So, you gotta have so many days, and you need to make a lot of stuff. Okay, who else can?
All right, I'm glad to, I'm glad.
Uh, just please.
Thanks, Tim, uh, to contact, uh, for the, for the, regarding the flashers, we were, we had, we had this conversation, as, uh, the act was given, close this week, as what caused the flashers in front of the school as well as behind the building. It's right around two thousand dollars. And what he's asking for, where he has to see the answer, that is, uh, some, by just proof of multiple times, now, that, those flashers. We are going to, we are going to reimburse for the flashers that we want, we, if that works, just right.
What, how does pricing increase, it was about sixty-nine million dollars.
How many was like, seventy, about around seventy-five million dollars, a set of flashers, as well as quoted to, to bank them this time. So it's in that fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollar. But that's for two sets of flashers, that's for the front, as well as.
Four flashes.
Yes, two flashes, yes, two sets.
Well, that's what we need in that order. Matter of fact, I, I don't know.
They, they, I know that request was, was, uh, speaking both, it's, it's.
They're gonna put, they're, they're, but the problem is, it's your parents, they're gonna get them. So they're gonna be in between the lines. So I don't think life is the end, or the. Later, folks, talk about that, and, and, and get it. I don't know. We can stop life, or, or, I don't think that's what they're gonna, they're gonna give out tickets outside.
I mentioned this a few more times, we have a roadside out of, out of, out of Fox, right out in front of the school, uh, traffic engineer. Although he could approve flashing lights for Midway, he would least see the Midway, uh, and see metal signs in two locations in front of, in front of you. Like, if, if you walk out front, I don't know, Mr. Bates, in front of this one, I don't believe we have a sign out on the highway that even signifies that we have a school.
Was it Mr. Wayne, was that the guy's name?
Right, yeah, traffic engineer for State Department, I don't know.
Why, Mr. St. Brian, Brian. On Midway, I guess with the exception of Brian, who is, uh, such a good guest there, and don't still get ahead in the ramp lights, and, and, uh.
Amy Smith, uh, we were standing up there about six o'clock in the morning, about a year ago. And he faithfully promised me that, he said, I, I don't think I'll be able to approve, uh, traffic systems out here. But he said, I'll at least see that you get, uh, metal signs, I send you one, uh, for, for two locations.
David, what you're on, so far. Eddie? All right, if I have any else. The conference, Derek, on, uh, Monday, Monday, count the odds now. Please, not Mr. Ed, second by, Mr. Kerr. Oh, yes?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, thank you all.